Good evening. We'll call to order the Eldorado City Commission meeting for August 6th. Tabitha, would you have a roll call, please?
Mayor Hayes.
Present.
Commissioner Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Badway.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Present.
Thank you. Next on our agenda would be invocation. Do we have anybody prepared to do that necessarily unless there's somebody from the audience that would wish to lead us in invocation? Anybody from here? Being none, I'll lead that. Father, we thank you for this day and all the many blessings that we have in our community. We ask your special guidance on this body today that we do the work of the people. Bless those who have come to join us tonight and may have safe travels home. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance, please join me. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Proclamation and recognitions, we have a AAA Safety Traffic Safety Award to talk about tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks, thank you very much for having me. My name is Sean Stewart with AAA Kansas and I'm pleased to be here to present the Eldorado Police Department with its fourth consecutive AAA Kansas Traffic Safety Award, this one for their work in 2017. I'd first like to recognize Mr. Troy Wells, who's a law enforcement liaison with KDOT. He works very closely with us and also law enforcement agencies in his territory to make sure that they're recognized for these awards and get their applications in. So, thank you Troy. We present these AAA Traffic Safety Awards to law enforcement agencies that implement programs and projects that demonstrate outstanding efforts to address local traffic safety issues. And Eldorado PD is one of 34 police departments in the state of all sizes to qualify for the award this year. The department is being recognized for a variety of programs and initiatives, including having a departmental policy on seatbelt usage, taking part in the monthly meetings of the Regional Operation Impact Traffic Safety Committee, participation in the state's most successful teen seatbelt usage program called SAFE at Eldorado, Ohio, organized initiatives for enforcement of seatbelt, child safety seat and DUI laws, commercial vehicle enforcement of driver safety and equipment regulations, and participation in the National Night Out for community outreach. So I first would like to thank all of you as city leaders for your support of the police department and the great work that they do. And it's with special pleasure that I present Chief Zeeman and the men and women of Eldorado PD with the AAA Traffic Safety Gold Award.
I would like to mention that I'd like to give kudos to Sergeant John Thompson. He puts a lot of work into this. He's the one that sends in our application. He's also one of the most productive as far as traffic enforcement in our department. He attends those Operation Impact meetings that he talked about. So, John's actually on vacation out of state, otherwise he'd be here to accept this, but appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time. Thanks.
Congratulations. Not having any personal appearances, we'll move to public comment. Anybody from the audience wish to address the commission regarding items that are not on our agenda?
Hello, my name's Logan Stensing. I recently live at 612 North Washington. I participated in the city internship offered and I just want to first say thank you. It was a really great opportunity, Mr. Gilner, Tabitha, I mean, it was a really welcoming environment and I learned a lot. I learned more than I probably will learn in school and that was great. I loved the nitty-gritty details and if anything, it solidified my passion for, you know, local government. The other thing's kind of unrelated, so something that I've noticed and I've noticed it from, you know, when I was like 16 because I helped with the presidential election then. And something that is an issue and that you don't really have in Eldorado is a space for people to meet and organize. You know, typically, public libraries are like a great space for people that don't have money. You know, I'm 16, I'm 19 now. I keep trying to do things in the community, but I, you know, my house, I live in a two-bedroom apartment with my dad, so I can't do anything there. And you have to pay 50, I think $50 to rent out the room at the library. And, you know, that's kind of out of my budget and out of a lot of kids' budgets. And so, not just for political activity, but I think importance, the importance of having an ability where students, people that don't have the money, can have the ability to organize or have a space where they can organize, where they can have their ideas shared. I mean, I've searched for spaces. I went to the county clerks are, the county, Butler County Elections Office and asked them, I want to do voter registration, I want to have a phone bank where I can call people to try and get them registered to vote or try to do something. This is nonpartisan and they don't have a space. There's nowhere. And so, when I face that, it makes me not want to do things. I mean, I have to do all of my activity in Wichita because they have spaces where I can meet and gather and get people together. And so, it's not just a political thing, I think it deals with a lot of different groups. I mean, going up to KU, I've seen the library serve as this really cool area where people can have clubs, they can have meetings, and I think that kind of spurs engagement in the community and makes people have kind of an emotional investment that you don't really have in Eldorado. So I guess I was just bringing it up to the city commission because I think it's a really, you know, I've always wanted to create a space where people can do that and maybe have that. And so, I just was curious if the commission would want to pursue anything or if they thought that there was some avenue there, so.
All right. Thank you.
Hold on, hold on. What's next? For you?
Well, what's next?
For you?
For life, or?
Well, I mean, what are you going to do now?
Well, I mean, I'm going to go back to KU. Still majoring in public administration. Still, I think my big thing is I really care about the political process and making sure everyone's involved. I don't really care what political party you're involved or part of, but if you don't vote, it doesn't make sense to me.
You can't cry either if you don't vote.
Yeah, you know, and so, it's that thing where there's a lot of people that aren't engaged, but how do we get them engaged? And I think that you have to have some cohesion in the community and when it's kind of a pay-to-play system like Eldorado where you have to have the money to be able to organize, you have to have the money to be able to be in a group. And I understand that money is really important in like a lot of capacities, but like the voter registration, you just need participants there. You just need people and it's really hard to collectively discuss and organize your ideas when you're not in a space together. And so, you know, I mean, I stopped trying to do voter registration in Eldorado because I could not find a space where we can have a meeting that I didn't, you know, I don't have the funds. I pay a car payment, college, you know, rent. I don't have money to spend on the side and to use that to help other people meet together. You know, I don't have that, those funds. And it's frustrating, I guess, trying to care about a community when there's not a way for you to do it, if that makes sense. If it's not, if you're not providing avenues to facilitate it, it's difficult, especially with like people that aren't engaged.
I love your energetic idealism. Do not lose that. That will take you far.
Hopefully. I know, I just think it's, you know, I've just seen the benefits in Lawrence and I think it's really cool to see different groups. I mean, there was one group that met in the city library every week and they collected a bunch of narratives and stories of like elders that had lived in the community and now they're making a mural on the front of the library. That took work. That took hours of time of interviews and discussion and they, the people that participated loved it. They got to know the community, they got invested, and the community got a benefit of a beautiful new mural that was personalized to the city. You know, so like, there's those different avenues that you can have and for me, the public library, having that space, but it not being accessible is, you know, it's troubling. And, you know, like, yeah, it's just, it would be cool if there was a space where people could organize and maybe collectively have meetings. That way, people get groups and like what I reiterated.
Hopefully, next summer, when you come home for the summer, we'll figure that work.
Oh, yeah. Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hard work.
Anybody else wish to address the commission?
Anyone but you.
We'll move on to next, it'd be consent agenda. Items eight through 10 on your agenda. In the consent agenda, everybody has a chance to send out earlier last week, just to review that. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? If there are none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further question? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Not having any old business, we'll move to new business. Which is, first thing on our agenda would be a budget. Something that we've spent a number of months working on and I think David has a summary for today and will open up for public hearing.
What I'm going to talk about and what I'm going to present to you today is the 2019 proposed budget. This will be, I guess, a prelude to the budget hearing that you're going to have right after I get out my presentation. What I tried to do is, you guys have been working on this for several months now, but the folks that are at home watching have not been, so unfortunately, some of this, a lot of this is going to be repeat for you, but what I tried to do is distill some of this into a much smaller presentation. So I'm not going to cover everything, but I am going to cover a lot of things, hopefully in a quick, short period of time, so that folks at home that are watching this can understand what our budget looks like for the upcoming year. And then, if there's any folks here that are here to comment on the budget or ask questions, then we'll obviously take those as well. So, I'll jump right in, so as not to take up too much time. So, key highlights for this year's, for next year's proposed budget, I should say. The assessed valuation for the city increased 6.1% from 86.7 million to 91.9 million. So now, a mil is worth 89,525 dollars. The overall mil levy will remain flat, however, it's important to note that the general funds' mil levy is increasing approximately four mils, but we're offsetting that with a reduction in the debt service fund. So as you can see on this chart here, we're comparing the 2017 and 2018 mil levies, I'm sorry, 2017, 18 and 19 mil levies. So you can see that in 19, we're budgeting a 53 mil, or 53 mils, but if you will note the box there, a reduction in the annual debt service requirement has allowed us to reduce that from 14.8 to 10.6, and so that's basically offset the mil levy increase. So, we are in essence proposing a 39.1 million dollar budget. It's hard to believe that our budget isn't that big, but it's important to note that we actually won't spend 39 million dollars next year as we limit the budget, but what we do is we budget the maximum amount. So we budget, we're budgeting, you all approve a budget authority of 39.1 million dollars, assuming you approve the budget. And what that does is it sets the ceiling for expenditures and then we come in much below that because we also, we also include in our budget the contingency reserve that is there in case something unexpected happens. So as you can see on this chart here, it's kind of a breakdown of all of the mil levy funds, so the funds that are supported with a mil levy in whole or in part, the general fund being the largest of those funds. We are budgeting 10.8 million dollars to spend on general government services. Those will include police, fire, park maintenance, public works, a number of different services. In essence, if it doesn't have its own fund, it gets thrown in the general fund and so that's what we have. As you can see, the 2018 mil levy for the general fund is 35.257, followed by the debt service fund of about 2.2 million dollars, the library fund of about half a million, the airport of 319,000, and then our industrial mil levy fund coming in at 494,000 for a total budgeted authority of 4.8 million dollars for our mil levy sponsor or mil levy backed funds. In addition to that, we have a number of other funds that make up the 39.1 million dollars. Those include our major street fund, stormwater, economic development, sales tax, prairie trails, special parks and rags, special alcohol, tourism, water and sewer, and a myriad of other funds that are on the next slide. But again, on this slide, we have to the, right there, the total budgeted authority that's included in this upcoming 2019 budget. The largest of those is obviously the water fund. There's somewhat of an anomaly in that fund and we'll get to that in just a moment. And then finally, completing out the lineup, we have the refuse fund, the compressed natural gas fund, data processing fund, construction fund, which isn't really, it's a fund, but it's really a pass-through fund. We'll budget capital improvement projects, the money will get spent, but then it gets pushed to a geo bond. So, this is basically our short-term financing fund and then we move projects to the long-term fund, it gets pushed off the, out of the construction fund and into a bond. The senior center fund, street ordinance, sales tax, which is the fund that the city general fund transfers money from the sales tax that is approved as part of our street maintenance program into this fund, our excess sales tax fund, and then our building demolition fund as well. So rounding up at the bottom there, all those funds cumulatively add up to 31, 39.1 million dollars. So now, I'm just going to touch on a few of the highlights associated with each of these funds. As I mentioned, the general fund, we're offsetting the increase. We are projecting sales tax receipts of two and a half million dollars and franchise fees of 1.8 million dollars, and we're estimating 3.24 million dollars from property taxes as the primary revenue sources for the general fund. We are removing one vacant full-time equivalent from the public works department for an estimated savings of 45,000 dollars. It's important to note that this is a current vacant position. We are not laying off anybody, we're just not funding a position that hasn't been funded or hasn't been filled for at least a year or two. It also includes estimated savings from the park department, reorganization of about 50,000 dollars. We had some changes of positions there and so that'll save us about 50,000 dollars. And we also are including about 1.46 million dollars in transfers, broken out as follows. 41,000 to the senior center, 197,000 to prairie trails, 500,000 to the excess sales tax fund, 600,000 to the street sales tax fund, 105,000 to major streets, and 16,000 to the building demolition fund. This, this presentation or this slide right here just talks more about the transfers and kind of shows how they compare in relation to prior years. You should note that some of the biggest stuff, or the biggest transfers like prairie trails, we've done a lot to reduce that and we continue to look for ways to make those operations more efficient. Some of these are actually established by ordinance. For example, the excess sales tax and the street sales tax are established by ordinance and then some of the others are based upon prior commission policy or practice such as the senior center, which has agreed to transfer up to a mil for the senior centers operations. Other operational funds, the airport fund, we have a pretty big project next year, runway rehabilitation and reseal project. We're going to pay 45,000 dollars for that fund, that project, but the total project costs about 450,000 dollars. The FAA has granted us a grant of 90% of that project, so hence the 45,000 dollar project I'm arguing. We do have a vacancy in this fund right now. The airport manager position is currently vacant. We are going to leave that position unfilled for the time being, but we are going to review the position at the beginning of the year to determine if we need to continue to look for a replacement for that position or if we're going to do something differently internally. Prairie trails, we are projecting to transfer 197,000 dollars from the general fund to this fund. We have reclassified full-time equivalents from prairie trails to park maintenance fund, or the general fund rather, for projected savings of about 60,000 dollars. So again, we're trying to do everything we can to reduce the impact on the general fund to this fund. But one thing that we do know that we're going to have to do in the near future is develop a plan to replace golf carts, and so that'll be something that'll be coming up here in the near future. The tourism fund, we've done several things on this fund to get it back into a balance. We were spending a whole lot from this fund that we didn't have in terms of revenue. So some of the things that we've done include reducing the city's contribution for the Eldorado Broncos by 10,000 dollars. We are eliminating a full-time equivalent position that's going to save us about 32,000 dollars. We are including annual savings of 40,000 dollars from a proposed forgiveness of internal debt issued for BG Stadium. Several funds are also fall underneath that to different amounts, including the water fund, the sewer fund, the refuse fund, and the tourism fund. We're also moving the municipal band from this fund to the general fund, so we'll save about 7,000 dollars from the tourism fund. And in addition, we're planning to spend some additional money on promotional items and enhancements to the communities such as 10,000 dollars to market the new flag design, 2,500 dollars on banner program, and 4,000 dollars for our summer concert series that was started this year, but we didn't have really a budget for that. So, because it was such a successful event, we want to include that in terms of next year's budget. And we've also changed the way we budget and do events, so instead of paying a lot of money for events to host events, we've kind of changed that equilibrium in how we're asking folks to pay us to host events. So we'll see how that works, but so far, it's worked out well for us this year, especially for Drums Across Kansas. So as this chart here shows, in 17, as you can see, our expenses exceeded our revenues quite a bit and we've been able to slowly build that down. And so, our 2019 proposed budget is 4,000 dollars less than our revenue, so it's still very close, but it's in the right direction. Now, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of our enterprise funds. These are funds that are intended to be self-supporting by revenues or charges for services. The first being water fund. Should be stated that on all of our utility funds, no rate increases are proposed, so that's obviously a good thing. We had to increase those fees of the last year and we definitely don't want to do that unless we absolutely have to. So next year, it looks like we won't have to. One of the big things that we're doing in several funds, including the water and sewer fund as well as stormwater, is we are redistributing some of our salaries. For example, the city manager, finance director, and city clerk will be removed entirely from this fund and those salaries will be moved to the data processing fund. With that said though, the water, sewer, stormwater, these funds will make a transfer to the data processing fund for their commensurate portion of those salaries, but it'll make it easier from a transparency standpoint to track down where those salaries, what those salaries are and how they get funded. We are estimating increased revenue of 130,000 dollars from Holly Frontier Raw Water Contract. This fund is also one of the funds that will have the benefit of the forgiveness of the internal debt for BG Stadium to the tune of about 65,000 dollars. The anomaly that I mentioned at the beginning of the slideshow with respect to the water fund is involving the proposal to prepay lake debt stages two and three for about 8.3 million dollars. We have about that amount of money in cash equivalents right now and doing that will save approximately 5.9 million dollars in interest over the life of what we would otherwise pay in debt. And so, the commission's kind of talked about that and presently, we've budgeted to include that as a, as an expense next year. So you'll see the water fund spike quite a bit, but that's because we'll transfer those monies from the lake debt fund to the water fund and make that payment, assuming that we do that next year, but we have budgeted to do that. In addition, we are expecting a carryover in the fund balance of 844,000 dollars. This is good news because the water fund was one of those funds that we wanted to closely monitor and watch, but due to the actions taken last year, the water fund is doing much better than it had been prior year. And as you can see here, we are, well, this slide doesn't really show you much justice because it does include the lake debt fund payment, so it looks like we're spending 8 million dollars more, which in fact, we are planning to do so. Sewer fund, no rate increases are also proposed. We're including annual savings of 65,000 dollars, much like the water fund for the BG Stadium forgiveness, redistributing some salaries, and it looks like we're going to be carrying over a fund balance of approximately 227,000 dollars for this. And so that's good from the perspective that on day three when I came, the sewer fund had 89,000 dollars of cash in there, so we've been able to take actions to remedy that and this fund is looking much better than it was. And so this slide here shows you that we'll carry over approximately that amount of money. The refuse fund, no rate increases are proposed again. The big thing on this one is we are, we are budgeting a cash acquisition of a 200,000 dollar reload, rear-load truck, so it is budgeted. The nice thing about this fund, or the way this fund operates, is that we save up a bunch of money and then make a large capital purchase, so our balance comes down quite substantially and then we just turn around and start saving back up for the next vehicle purchase. In addition to that, we'll have a 20,000 dollar annual savings from the internal debt savings from BG Stadium. Now jumping into some non-operational funds, the street sales tax fund, this fund, we allocate 600,000 dollars per ordinance for street maintenance and 100,000 dollars of that is spent on recomite application and/or crack sealing, and then the remainder of 500,000 dollars is spent on major maintenance projects, including mill overlays and curb and gutter replacements. So we're going to continue to do that. Currently, we have a contingency reserve of 641,000 dollars in there, so we'll have a lot of street work to do next year. The excess sales tax fund, this is the fund where the excess dollars from our once-in-sales tax are transferred in this fund and then the sales tax task force, or sales, excess sales tax committee rather, makes a recommendation based upon projects that are submitted and then you all include those items in your budget after you've reviewed them. So, we are, the task force, the committee has recommended 294,000 dollars of additional property tax reduction, 40,000 dollars for Gordy Park playground improvements, 40,000 dollars for tennis courts at prairie trails, but that should actually say just tennis courts. So 40,000 dollars for tennis courts, 30,000 dollars for East Park concession stands and restrooms, 15,000 dollars for Central Park batting cage, 10,000 dollars for the Chamber of Commerce grant program. There was a request for 10,000 dollars for the disc golf course for some changes to the disc golf course. The commission decided not to include that recommendation, but allocated those dollars to a library basketball court. In addition, 4,000 dollars for wireless controllers for the activity center and 3,500 dollars for picnic tables. That amount could be increased based upon additional dollars from this fund or a couple of other funds we've identified as well. The bond and interest fund, we are planning to issue about, a little over 6 million dollars in geo bonds with the first payment in May of 2020. The budget currently includes an annual debt service payment of 1.59 million dollars and that will service several bond issuances. Of note, 18.2% of those payments are paid from special assessments from folks that are actually benefiting from infrastructure that was improved that the city's done over the last several years. The industrial mil levy fund, the city has allocated 113,000 dollars to Eldorado Inc. as a contribution match and also for contractual services related to economic development from this fund. We've also included 40,000 dollars from the BG Stadium proposal. And other than that, we have no other plans to spend the balance. These funds, send this fund and wait for an economic development purpose, so as a project may come up that needs funding, we have funds that are available to do, to address those circumstances. And then of special import, the lake debt reserve fund, again, showing the 8.1 or 8.2 million dollars that we are budgeting to prepay our debt obligations associated with stages two and three with cash that we have in the bank. And then finally, the equipment reserve fund, kind of changing the way that we look at equipment, we have a pretty large fund balance in this fund of 606,000 dollars, so we're going to, we're going to start budgeting to spend down that amount so we can get to some future years where we'll have some revenue coming on the books. So in the foreseeable future, as you can see, the blue, I'm sorry, the black line goes down pretty sharply, but that's intentional as we spend down that reserve and get to a point where we can get to be self-sustaining in the equipment reserve fund. Next year, we're planning to Next year, we're planning to acquire three police patrol vehicles, two mowers, and two gated utility vehicles as part of our utility, I'm sorry, our equipment replacement schedule. So not a lot, but it's something, and we're gonna continue to put together a schedule to make that happen. So with that, I'll stand for any questions that you may have, and then you guys can open up the budget hearing.
Okay, any questions from the commission? Certainly, it all looked familiar to me.
Yeah, looks exactly what you guys were talking about, so.
Okay, thank you, David. Next on our topic, next item for this topic would be to open up for public hearing, discussion of the budget, so anybody from, at this point, will open up the podium for public hearing. Anybody wish to address the commission on this topic? Seeing none, we'll close public hearing, move on to approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the 2019 budget as published. It's going to direct staff to send the budget to the county clerk for certification.
I'm slacking it.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further questions or comments?
I have, I do. If the work session... No, I'm sorry, I don't. I'm ahead of myself, I don't. Never mind.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments?
None.
If you've done, I, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, everybody, for your work. Next item on our agenda would be the sales tax ordinance. This is something that I think we've had a task force looking at as we go to, we seek to renew this one-cent sales tax, which is in that budget as well. I think everybody understands, stands that. Property tax, we rely on sales tax for some of our property tax relief. So I guess, any questions or comments? This is something I think we discussed Wednesday, and again, we've had some comments on it, so.
I was looking at the wrong page, and I was thinking...
Kinda wondered that this might be...
And it was, it's been a long day.
Yeah, I understand, me too. Okay. Anything from the staff, or we get up here on this conversation with the commission?
Sure, I'll give a quick overview of the proposed one-cent sales tax. The sales tax task force met a handful of times and have recommended an ordinance and resolution that would place a one-cent sales tax on the general election scheduled for November 6th, 2018. The sales tax task force recommended an ordinance that changed the distribution formula just slightly, but not too much. So the first $1.65 million would be allocated annually for property tax reduction, the next $600,000 would be allocated annually for street rehabilitation within the city of El Dorado, the next $100,000 would be allocated annually for economic development purposes, and then the balance would be distributed per ordinance, per an ordinance that you all will consider in just a moment. The major changes are as follows. The task, or yeah, the task force wanted to incorporate or consolidate, rather, the amount that was set aside for property tax reduction. So originally, the ordinance was set up for $1,350,000 initially, and then an additional amount, up to $300,000, of additional property tax per the recommendation of the task force. And what they recommended was just consolidating that so that the first $1.65 million is set aside for property tax reduction as the first change. The second change they recommended was increasing the amount set aside for economic development from $50,000 to $100,000, meaning the third change that was recommended is not necessarily a major, well, a change in terms of the actual formula, but the excess sales tax then would get slightly less than what it had been because the amount would not be, they had to fund the economic development amount, $50,000. So the excess sales tax program will be reduced by a commensurate $50,000 to make that change happen. One thing that they did talk about was changing the five-year sunset provision to a permanent and then to a 10-year provision. They opted not to do that, so the ordinance that is in front of you is for a five-year one-cent sales tax that will come up again in five years if it's provided others. So with that, I will stand for any questions that the commission may have.
What is your ordinance number gonna be, Tabitha?
1281.
Okay, any questions from the commission?
So ordinance 1281 is what you just said. As I said in the work session, I mean, we were all talking, I'd prefer to leave it the way it was. With $1,350,000, with the additional 300, we're concerned if it doesn't bring in what we anticipate, then we're locked into that. I don't, I don't wanna take anything away from streets. We've got great streets, and a big, big part of the reason that we do have great streets is because we take care of them. And the reclemite program and the other things we do, I don't wanna take anything away from that. As far as going back to the economic development, adding 50,000 of that, the excess sales tax that we look at all the different projects, we get to do things for all different areas of town with that money. And we can always, if we have an economic development need, we can always do that, but this locks it in. And I personally, I don't, would not like to see us take 50,000 away from those special projects because that's very diverse, and like I say, we can do things in all parts of town with that, with that money. So I would like to see this ordinance remain the same as it has in the past. It's been very successful, and quite honestly, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
If we, thanks, Nick, if we have a down year, an abnormally down year for sales tax, what would be the hierarchy of the funding? What gets cut out of all this, what doesn't happen first? Is there a...
The excess sales tax goes first.
Excess sales tax goes first.
Yeah, so in essence, it goes back...
That's the lowest thing, and then...
It's the excess sales tax, and it's economic development, and it's streets, and it's property tax reduction. Or as it's currently written today, the street piece is actually the first piece, so it would be the last piece. Now, we changed that to reflect the property tax piece as part of the discussion last Wednesday, but with that, so, and the reason, I guess, that that came up as a part of the conversation was, in the event that there is an economic downturn, for example, we can reduce the amount we spend on street rehabilitation for a year if we had to, but the 1.35, and now, really, the 1.65 million is baked into the books, meaning that we pay, please, please officer firefighters, we pay operating costs with those dollars. So reducing that amount, we can do because we have a contingency reserve, but it's easier to reduce some of these other items, maybe for one year if we had to, and those operating expenses, because we don't know what our contingency reserve would look like in those areas, in those years. So due to uncertainty, while the property tax reduction is marketed like that, for all intents and purposes, today, it is not that. It is actually general operational dollars. That sort of is property tax reduction, don't get me wrong, it reduces, has the effect of reducing the mill levy, but those dollars are operational dollars. So reducing that means we reduce operational expenses, which becomes a little harder to do.
So reducing that to the 1, to the 1.3, by that $300,000, which is the way it's currently written, we don't get to, you don't get to claim that additional $300,000 in your budget calculations.
But what's, what's happening right now is they're adding that at the leftover portion of it.
Right.
It's already thrown in there.
Right.
Well, then, like, it's not already, it's put on every year by that committee.
Right.
Right.
And no one's, I mean, like, no one's touching it, it's key, it's there.
Yeah.
But that, that's what that, so it's, I mean, it's still being used that way.
It, yeah, I think we're all trying to say the same thing.
To your question, though, you asked if we were not including the $300,000 in the budget calculation.
Yeah, right.
We do include it because the way we currently spend sales tax, we collect it in one year, we allocate it the next year, and then we spend it in the third year. And so we're currently spending in that additional property tax reduction, money that was collected in '16.
Right.
So it is in the budget.
When I was elected to this commission, the reason why, one of the reasons why I was elected, because I was told people wanted to see progress in the community. And in order to have progress in this community, we need to keep the $50,000 in our economic development so we can move forward and bring more tax base to the community, and I think that's a good program to leave in there.
Well, what I heard, the 50 wasn't the question, is whether or not to move that to 100.
That was my question. I don't have any problem leaving it the way it is, and, I mean, leaving it at 50, and then if something comes up and we need some more, we can always put it in there, but this locks it in. I'd rather have a little bit of option wiggle room, call it whatever you want to.
Do we have wiggle room in the budget if we have an economic phenomenon happen and we need?
Well, right now, the general fund has a contingency reserve of $700,000 in it. That's not what we'd like it to be, but it has some of that knowledge in it. There are other funds as well that have contingency reserves, so it's not like that's the only, only fund that would be available in the event that we...
So if the end-all to end-all presented itself?
If the end-all, end-all presented itself, then we wouldn't need to be worrying about these numbers.
Ah, okay.
Yeah. And then there, isn't there Economic Development Fund that's got like 400 grand in it, is that what that slideshow is?
I believe that's correct. Ish. So we have, we have the industrial mill levy fund, we have the Economic Development Sales Tax Fund, so Economic Development does have some resources in it, too.
Now, did the sales tax task force give a reason for wanting to increase?
Well, I think they, they see the benefit of having money set aside for economic development purposes. Many of them have had involvement with economic development opportunities, and they thought it would be good to increase that amount because you never know what's gonna happen in the future, as far as a specific, you know, a specific reason, that's, that's what gets, but there have been a number of programs the city's used those dollars for that have been pretty successful, some more successful than others, but, you know, I think, I think that's what they're gonna look at.
Scott, in your tenure here, to the best of your knowledge, has the city of El Dorado ever lost or missed out on an economic development opportunity because we were unable to fund it?
No, but I, when you look at these funds, in the task force as they met, they look at these funds more as strategies, not saying X, Y, Z corporation is in town and we need to give them this sort of incentive. They talked a lot about initiatives and strategies, maybe to use these funds for housing rehab programs, demolition programs, retention of existing businesses, things that necessarily we haven't really looked at in the past, not so much as a bank of funds to be able to give to some big corporation that's coming down.
Okay.
That's what they talked about.
And maybe I'm just being narrow-minded about it, I don't know, maybe I'm not seeing the big picture, but I...
But that's a whole different way of looking at it.
Yeah, correct.
It's all about being more creative about how we use those funds and how we get those funds out and used, and not necessarily sitting and holding those funds for, to pass away to some corporation.
Yeah.
It's more about how do we improve our community with those funds.
That's how we spend money, spend money to make money. I hadn't thought that way.
Thank you, Scott.
And David kinda captured a lot of that as definitions in the resolution attached here tonight.
Yeah, and I guess I can quickly go over that as well. So one of the other changes that the task force wanted to see of the committee that Scott alluded to is, they wanted more clarification on economic development, and they wanted to define it a little more, so it wasn't just economic development. So as part of that, economic development projects and initiatives, as far as the ordinance goes, shall mean efforts by the city that facilitate business attraction strategies, business creation strategies, business retention strategies, enterprise development strategies meant to assist entrepreneurs in the support of the creation, growth, and survival of their businesses, housing strategies that provide affordable options for the workers, and public infrastructure projects that have potential to increase tax base. In addition to those definitions, the committee also wanted to include that there be a reasonable expectation of return on investment to the city in the form of increased property taxes, sales taxes, transit guest taxes, or other municipal revenue sources when a project is requesting these funds. So in other words, if there's a project or a proposal that comes up, whether that be in any of these categories, then the committee and the city would have to weigh those strategies in the dollar amount versus the potential return on investment in terms of the city's actual tangible benefit. So is it gonna increase property taxes, increase the tax base by bringing, you know, some customer wants to build a building, or maybe it'll allow us to get a new conference center, which will increase heads and beds. So there's a number of different things, and they wanted to see a tangible return on investment projection in assessment of funds he uses. In addition, the final thing was, they wanted to place a higher priority on projects and initiatives to leverage public and/or private investment and seek to publish the strategies and to create or retain level wage jobs. So it's not just what's the city gonna do, but if it's a proposal, is the private sector gonna get involved to leverage those dollars so we can give more bang for our buck?
Who's gonna develop these strategies? Who's, I mean, these seven things, six things here? What is the, what is the plan on that?
Well, I mean, the city has a pretty good partnership with El Dorado Inc. in terms of developing strategies that address, you know, all of those areas. We also work with the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street, number of partners, so I would suggest that it would be a collaborative effort that we would continue, kind of what we're doing now, to develop those strategies and really formalize them, I guess is what I would say.
We, to Nick's point, some of the excess sales tax has gone into some pretty effective small projects that make a difference in quality of life. Parks projects seem to be the, what we spend that money a lot on. In the absence of that, I mean, if we think about, let's just think about that as being a, you know, $50,000 less next year than it was this year, assuming that it passes the voters, is there a strategy in mind for how we continue those type projects, or is that that part of the, part of the five-year capital project plan that we look at? I don't, I don't wanna lose sight of all the things that happen, um, that are quality of life things, that make, that, that, that this, these funds provide amenities for the citizens and for us as a community.
And then, and I agree 100%, but then, to me, this F, public infrastructure projects that have the potential to increase the tax base.
Yeah.
I mean...
Yeah, those are quality life type projects.
Yeah, I mean, so...
So really, are we doing the same thing, just a different way of saying it?
I think what the, what the committee thought about when they did that was, you know, if you, this is just an example, but for example, if you extend a water line, and that, that opens up an opportunity for development, you know, that's one example. I don't know, so the park projects that are included in the excess sales tax would necessarily increase the tax base, replacing, you know, playground equipment, or building a shelter, or, um, putting out a basketball court, while those in and of themselves are good for quality of life, will do nothing to the tax base. So I don't know, so the, the committee, when they were thinking about that, they weren't necessarily thinking about park projects per se. I think they were thinking about tangible infrastructure projects that open up areas for development.
Somebody moved here, 'cause we had the coolest parks around, build a house, that's...
I'm not suggesting that that can't happen, I'm just suggesting...
I know, I'm just...
It's harder to...
I'm just jacking it, dude. That being said, what I said, I think it's important that the commission is together on this.
Mm-hmm.
I haven't changed my mind, but I will support whatever a majority of the commission decides to do, and vote accordingly.
So all this paperwork we have?
There are two resolutions and two ordinances based on the idea that there was some discussion on whether or not to combine the property tax or leave it separate, the property tax reduction amount. So there is a resolution and ordinance with the property tax at $1,350,000, with the option for an additional $300,000 in property tax reduction from the excess, and then there's one where it's written as $1,650,000 with no option for additional property tax reduction.
Look at you.
But these ordinances are both for 1.35 for property tax reduction.
Did we miss one?
Or am I reading it wrong?
No, you're reading right.
You're reading it right. The first one has the 50,000 for economic development, and the second one's the 100,000 for economic development.
Okay, here's what we'll do, you tell me which one is one, I'll go and write the one. But in essence, we have, we have two options, like a menu, because at the last meeting, we didn't, we didn't have clarification on how you all would proceed with the property tax question. So, um, we have the one that will combine the two property tax reductions into 1.65 million dollars, and include 600,000 for streets, 100,000 for economic development, the rest being attributed to the excess program. Option two is, uh, 1.35 million for property tax reduction, 600,000 for streets, $100,000 for rent development, and then the rest being excess, but up to, an additional property tax reduction of up to 300,000 can be included in the excess as well. So much like we're doing...
That's, that's the one with the recommendation from the sales tax committee?
No, the one that the sales tax committee recommended was 1.650,000.
1.6.
I thought we agreed on that at the meeting on Wednesday.
No, I knew that he wanted to sleep on.
Yeah, okay. So this first one's status quo? The, the one with the $50,000, that's status quo, that's what we...
The one with 50,000 was not supposed to be included in the packet, because that wasn't the direction the commission offered. Now, you can change that, and we'll have to go out and judge the ordinance.
Okay.
So you're gonna go in there and write the, the...
I can make it.
And it looks like a couple of small changes, right, just five minutes?
So basically, we decide which resolution we want, and that depends on how you type the ordinance.
Yeah. Yeah, the resolution, you tell me what you want, and we'll...
Well, I think the resolutions...
Which change do I go?
No, the resolution is correct.
Well, the res, yeah, the resolution's okay.
It's...
The resolution's...
I think what happened, David sent these to me about an hour and a half before the meeting, and I think I saved it incorrectly when I put it in the packet, so I think I actually have the correct one in my email, and you can...
Okay, so, so the recommendations, so we get, is 1.65 for property tax reduction.
That's right.
600,000 in street rehab, 100,000 in economic development, and the rest in excess sales tax allocations.
That is the recommendation from the sales tax committee.
In addition to the definitions on economic development and excess...
With, with the definitions included and five-year sunset?
Yeah, which that didn't change for me.
Right. Okay.
So is this the one right here?
I think you just...
Once, once you decide what number, you can pass the ordinance, and we'll...
That's this one right here.
Um, it's, it's this one, it's right here, except that should be...
Okay, so that goes with this one right here?
Yes. Yes. Okay. Okay, well, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 1281, an ordinance pledging the future of the use of all revenue which may be received by one city retailer's sales tax levied in the city of El Dorado should be, uh, qualified electors of such city vote in favor thereof be approved.
Which one are you, which one are you?
I'm gonna be doing this one, the 16.
Okay, you, the, the one, okay.
65.
165.
Um, 600,000 for streets, 100,000 for economic development, five-year, and then the definitions as presented.
Right.
Okay, it's been moved, I need a second.
About time.
I propose an alternate.
I gotta, I need a second before we can...
Second.
Okay, it's been moved a second, um, uh, so now we have moved a second on the floor, we can have our discussion.
Okay. Well, I, I propose that we, we include, we, we, we roll the two together, that make it the 165. And then, I, I say we keep the, the, the economic development at 50,000, and then put in, maybe I don't have to put it in there, but if there's a project that needs an extra 50,000, they get, they present that to the sales tax committee, and then they, they approve it, the excess sales tax committee.
No, no.
Oh.
We probably should be deciding.
No, no, I mean, like, keep it at 50.
Okay.
But if, if someone has a project that they want to be funded by, by sales tax money of that, to get to that other 50, they go to the sales tax committee to get it, and present it to them to see if that committee will work with them. It's a compromise of putting that 50 back in the excess sales tax, but we are protecting the 300,000, which takes that off of the excess sales tax committee and puts it in the ordinance.
But everything that they, they send to us now, that we would retain, but it'd still come back to us for...
Correct.
We're talking the same committee or two different committees?
No, I'm talking about the, the committee that meets every year to distribute the funds.
The excess sales tax committee.
You're talking excess sales tax?
Correct.
Not the task force, which is...
Not the task force, the, the committee that we, we point every year that, that distributes to the parks.
So you're saying you want this excess sales tax committee to decide whether a business deserves an additional 50,000?
Not the business, but the economic development...
Yeah, the, the economic development, um...
Let's say if Inc. or Main Street or Chamber...
Can't they do that now?
They can do that now?
Yes.
And you all have that ability to do that now, like you did this year and last year when you changed the recommendations, you took out the USC 490 thing last year, and you took out the, um...
Are we trying to reinvent the wheel here, is that what we're doing?
No, all I'm trying to do is...
I mean, you have the ability to change the recommendations of the sales, excess sales tax committee at any point, so should something come up, you can add...
I, I think, I think the primary difference is, the amount of money, or per ordinance that we have more, that the commission has more control over, is dwindled by $50,000 under the current motion.
If, if we increase it by 100,000.
Yeah. And the other side of that equation is, that the, that the initiatives that, that, and strategies that are worked on through the course of time, don't have the budget, have to come and ask for the budget each year, rather than, than know they have that kind of budget to work with. To me, that's, those are the trade-offs.
Yeah. But I feel like they've, they've, they've done, you know, they've done well with this amount that they've done for the last five years, because they do have, they're in the black in their accounts. About 400 grand is what, 417, I think, is what I, what I saw on that slide. And it's not in, it's just, it's changing one thing, it's basically keeping the, the, at the six, at the 1.6, it's just that we're taking, we're taking that 50, that from 50 to 100 for economic development, putting it back in for the ability to use on parks or whatever. You can build a couple...
But you're also saying that not only could it be used for parks and whatever, but anybody else who has an idea for economic development can come in and apply for it.
Yeah, like young, young Logan, looking for a beans base.
Well, wouldn't that be done right now with this? The way we got it going, they could come in and apply it for the economic development.
But may, maybe that year, maybe that year, we, we need, you know, a new basketball court or tennis court, or something done with those. If we put it just for economic development, we're locking it into that, and it can't be used for anything else, that, that the excess sales tax committee feels like they want to do, personally.
I guess I would rather see economic, economic development come to the commission as opposed to the sales tax.
Well, and that's fine, I mean, they, they, they can.
It has to be.
Huh?
It has to be.
Well, I know, but I'm, I'm saying excess sales tax should not be...
Yeah, to be put for that?
Yeah.
Well, if we increase it to 100,000, it's going to be, 'cause that's what that...
These economic developments, 100,000, it's not going to excess sales tax.
No, it's taking it out of the excess sales tax money, putting it to economic development.
Right.
I'm proposing we don't add that extra 50,000 in to economic development, and it stays in the excess sales tax.
So, to me, we're changing departments or entities that are dealing with it?
That would go to...
That's where it is now.
I know, it's where it is now.
That would go to Scott, right, where he could write grants, and this money would pay to help...
No, I mean, it's in a, it's in the ex, it's, it's in a fund, it's in a fund, the excess sales, economic development sales tax fund. So the city is the only one that has authority over those funds. So if, if we need that, those monies for something, we're gonna come up with you and say, hey, we would like to spend this money as follows, you all will take a vote, we would approve it.
Are you worried about Inc. getting the money?
No, I'm not worried, I'm, I'm not worried about, I'm, what I'm worried about is it's going away from, it's, it's taking money away from that, the parks and rec, or whoever to come to the excess sales tax committee.
It's taking away options.
That's where, that's where, that's where I'm going with it. It's taking away the options for, for those things to get fixed.
But actually, the sales, sales tax task force actually listed what they saw as economic development, okay? Whereas in the past ordinance, it just says economic development, it doesn't say anything. So, that's, to me, these type of projects or initiatives...
This is marketing, sorry, dude.
Are not something that the excess sales tax committee should be dealing with.
No, it's been a good discussion. Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second, and we've got a suggestion for amending the motion. I guess Greg, you're off through the motion, it'd be up to you to...
Balls in your court.
Up to you to either amend, or we vote on the motion at hand.
I say we vote on the motion at hand.
And that one is, the 1.65, the 600,000, the 100,000...
And then excess.
And then excess.
Yes.
Yep. Okay. All right, um...
I wanna go last.
Don't get too... So, so, well, thanks for the conversation, uh, we'll, we'll go to roll call.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badger?
Oh.
If you, I mean, I don't know if there's a rule.
Pass.
I don't, I don't think there's a rule, I mean, if the rest of you...
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Goffey?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody, for the conversation, appreciate it.
Oh, that was fun.
Okay, we'll move on to, so, so next thing at hand, it would be to get this on the ballot for November.
I'm sorry, you missed a motion, we need one, there's one more motion on that page.
I turned the page too soon.
I need, I need the resolution to put the, the question on the ballot.
Is that on another page?
Same page as...
Alright, so the ordinance, um...
It is.
Sets up the decision formula for the proceeds, the resolution places the question on the ballot, and it will read as follows. Shall the city retailer's sales tax, an amount of 1%, extend for a period of five years from and after the first day of October 2019, in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, to take effect on the first day of October 2019, with the first 1.0, the first $1,650,000 to be allocated annually for property tax reduction, the next 600,000 to be allocated annually for street rehabilitation for the city of El Dorado, the next 100,000 dollars to be allocated annually for a fund for external development purposes, and if the balance being distributed per ordinance...
Number?
G1281.
G1281, which retailer's sales tax shall continue in full course of effect.
Any further question or comment from the commission?
What's the resolution number gonna be?
2862.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Well, we gonna wait till Nick gets back?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, suppose we should. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 2862, a resolution to submit to the qualified electors of the city of El Dorado, Kansas, uh, the propos, proposition of levying retailer's sales tax effective October 1st, 2018, be approved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any further comment or question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries five to zero, thank you. Next on our agenda would be status of the IPS, conditional use permit. Been getting some press lately, and I know we've got, uh, a, I know the county commission is hearing this, I think on the 14th, is that correct? Next week, next Tuesday, uh, this topic, and it is something that I know the city staff as well as, um, some neighboring property owners, city of El Dorado being some neighboring property owners have had a concern about this for some time, so I would say thanks to the county commission for, for bringing this to a head, one way or another, it gets cleaned up or it gets, or something happens, so, anything, staff that you'd like to report on this?
No, just asking you to consider the, the memo attached this evening, um, and submitting that as testimony to the county commissioners, um, on the city's stance. Listed in the memo were the original conditions placed on IPS to be able to operate at that facility, along with corresponding staff, city of El Dorado's staff responses to those conditions.
So what's in bold, were the, were there conditions for them to operate in our, in our three mile zone? Is that correct?
Well, what's in bold is, is what was put together by the county at the time. All of this was done in the county and did not go through the city.
And they agreed to?
Yeah, to be able to operate. The, the city at that time did help the county compile, come, come up with some of these conditions, but it was all a county function.
Now, is this memo the same one we read on Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Do you need a motion or, on this, or just a consensus?
There's a motion there for me.
I move to direct staff to send a memorandum regarding the revocation of the IPS CUP to the county board of commissioners.
Second.
It's moved in second. Any further comment or question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Okay.
It would potentially be beneficial if a member of the city commission, if not members of the commission, could present this. Your, the board can't question this, elected body, question yourselves. Sometimes I think they respond better to elected officials. Elected officials won't talk to elected officials. Staff would have to do it, but I, I think it would be, you'd have more influence potentially if you all could do it.
So if we went as a commission, could we do that? All five of us?
If you let me know, I'll call me.
Oh, I had planned to attend anyway.
I had planned to attend.
Nick was picking me up. Yeah, I'm going to pick him up.
It's on my calendar.
So I will call me on Tuesday morning.
Nine o'clock.
Tuesday?
Nine o'clock.
Fourth floor.
Fourth floor.
Yes.
Can't go out.
Like eight days. Okay.
So if one of you would like to present the city's comments.
This, this memorandum, essentially?
You can either read that or you can submit and then provide just general comments. The memo's not that long, so you can read what you'd like.
I can do that, unless somebody else from the commission was to do it.
I'll bring a deck of cards and a cup of coffee.
I'll bring the dogs.
I'm planning to be there, so.
What time in the morning?
Nine a.m.
On Tuesday, the fourteenth?
Okay. Thank you. Next on our agenda would be school zones.
Yes, mayor commissioners, there's a lot of activity, of course, going around. The new schools getting ready open and schools starting up sessions. Before you deny, is an ordinance which will amend our municipal code. And what this does is cleans up some of the school zones that are no longer in existence with the removal, demolition of the old Grand U site in Lincoln Elementary. And then it also, in turn, creates new school zones. So some new school zones around the Blackmore, Blackmore Elementary and Grand, the new Grand U Elementary on North Hunter twelve. Along with that is another ordinance, asking me to consider removing the one-way street as it exists today on Fifth Avenue between Atchison and Taylor. And that existed when Lincoln was operating.
That's been one way a long time.
Yeah. Now it'll be two-way after the night. So, geez. There is one, as part of the second ordinance in here on the back is the attachment, which lists the designated school zones that will be listed in the municipal code. Times that they will be active, speeds, reductions. There is one on here, and I note, I apologize, that needs to be removed from this attachment. And I just noticed it this evening, and it is West Fifth Avenue, of course, from Taylor to Atchison. So we would ask that be removed from this attachment.
Sixth from the bottom. Oh, Taylor to Atchison, okay, I see it there.
The tenth from the top.
So this does not list Orchard from third to sixth. Would that need to be a school zone?
It lists North Orchard Street, seven hundred foot south of Sixth Avenue to Sixth Avenue.
I guess I missed that. Where, oh, there it is. I'm sorry.
That's the second one.
I'm sorry, I got it.
Third Avenue will stay intact. You'll see Sixth Avenue included for the Blackmore.
Yeah. Move from Lincoln to the Blackmore site, essentially, on Sixth Avenue?
Yeah. The, the, the pedestrian crossing that exists there today at the old Lincoln site will continue to stay in service for pedestrians. The school zone will be removed there and basically move, be moved for the west to cover Blackmore.
Likewise, they'll, they'll lose the school zone on Twelfth Street there, but the pedestrian crossing would stay.
Correct.
Okay.
In fact, the Brad's guys are moving those school zone signs from Twelfth Avenue to Sixth Avenue. Just to reuse what we have.
What is this, the, that other fifth street? Why? Fifth Avenue to School Road, why?
That is out in Township Village.
For, oh, okay, okay.
What's your ordinance, Tim?
I'm going to change the motion a little. So the ordinance number is G twelve eighty-three. But I would like you to read it, read it the same up until it be approved with the deletion of item number ten on attachment A.
Item?
Number ten.
Ten on?
On attachment A.
Attach.
All right, let's entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number G twelve eighty-three and ordinance amending section one zero point zero eight point zero point one. An ordinance amending section one zero point zero eight point one three zero of the municipal code pertaining to school zones be approved. I even wrote it down and I can't read it. With deletion of item number ten on attachment A.
Second.
Okay, so we moved to second. Any further comment or question? I think none. We'll have roll call.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Twelve eighty-four?
Yes.
I move to approve ordinance number G one two eight four and ordinance amending section one zero point zero eight point zero five zero of the municipal code pertaining to one-way street restriction be approved.
Second.
It's moved in second. Any further comment or question? Roll call.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Oh, yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Yeah, but I had to make the motion.
All right. Now we have in front of us the Uniform Public Offense Code and the standard traffic ordinance, which we have books in front of us.
Good evening, mayor commissioners. Once a year, we come to you and ask you to vote on the UPOC and the STO. Each year, the Kansas League of Municipality basically publishes these books, provides them to cities. And basically what it is, as the laws are updated, they, they clean up the books. So we get these once a year. They do one, standard traffic ordinance. This is basically the most common traffic infractions that cities use condensed in one book. I mean, if you look at the actual Kansas traffic law manual, it's about that thick. So these are the most, most of what we use. The Uniform Public Offense Code, it's a similar book, but that's the criminal statutes. Keep in mind, these would be all misdemeanors. It would go through municipal court. There are quite a few changes. I would just like to address the new, the new sections they put in. Because most of what you see on this list, if you looked at it, are amendments. As, for instance, the DUI law, that's always been a pretty fluid law. They change it, tweak it a little bit every year. So when they do that up at the state level, they've got to clean up the statutes. That's what all these amendments are. Couple new sections on the standard traffic ordinance and definitions. They added waste collection vehicle. That would cover Brad's refuse trucks. They've also added a section forty point one of passing a stationary waste collection vehicle. It requires drivers to slow down, move over as far as safely possible when passing a waste collection vehicle that is collecting trash. It also states, we have to give warnings till July first of two thousand nineteen, then after that, we can write a ticket for it, so.
We have to dictate common sense.
Excuse me?
We have to dictate common sense.
Pretty much.
For them to slow down when they see.
What most of this book is, actually. So, I mean, yeah. That's probably, that's probably something that should have been in these statutes a long time ago. So, anyway, it's in there. Another addition is section one seventy-four that has to do with horns and warnings, warning devices. This is a new section in response to the passing of a waste collection vehicle. There are certain requirements that the collection vehicles have to have as far as their lighting and horns, et cetera. And I believe Brad's trucks are already compliant with that. Has to do with flashers at eye level, that type of thing. So he says he's in compliance. We can check it if you'd like us to. Those are the only additions or, or new, new, new laws put in the STO. UPOC's got a bunch of amendments, a couple that are interesting. They have added criminal littering. Littering was something that was always in city ordinance. If we wrote it, you'd have to write a city ordinance violation warrant. It's in UPOC now, so we can do that. They've also added possession of marijuana and possession of drug paraphernalia into the UPOC now. Right now, if we, if we arrest somebody or write somebody a ticket for possession of marijuana as misdemeanor, we use the city code number four. This will allow us to use the UPOC number four. It's just cleans things up, makes it a little simpler. Keep in mind, if we, if we get somebody with a drug in excess that makes it a felony, that still goes to district court. Municipal court deals with misdemeanors only, so. And I think those are the only changes, those are the only new, new additions. Like I said, the rest of them is just amendments of existing statutes.
On the traffic, on the trash truck ordinance, how far do they have to get over from the trash truck?
I don't think it's, I'd have to read it again. I don't think it specifies a different distance. It just says a reasonable amount. I mean, if you're, if you're in one of El Dorado's roads and you've got two parked cars and a trash truck, I mean, you're only going to be able to get over so far. So I don't think they can narrow it down to like so many feet or whatever.
Great. In this book, page fifty-eight.
Okay. Thank you.
The one with the car on it, yes.
Yeah.
Page fifty-eight.
So it's a forty-five dollar fine?
It doesn't say.
It's no fine till after July first of two thousand nineteen.
Is it going to be a moving violation?
It doesn't say in there. I don't know if it will be or not.
Okay, those were questions I had.
Uh, I couldn't answer that question. We'll have to look into that.
They were talking about it on the radio today.
I would think it would be.
Huh?
I would think it'd be a moving violation. Like I said, they've got it right in the statute. We can't even write a, we can write warning citations for it till July first of two thousand nineteen. And then after that, they'll establish a fine. I'm sure it'll be a set fine. I don't, I don't imagine they'll let the cities.
One fifty-two. It tells you what the fine is.
Oh, it actually has the fine? What is it?
It has lots of information and.
Uh, cool, yeah. I guess we'll worry about that in about a year. Because right now, we can just do warnings, so. Similar years ago, when the Kansas started the seatbelt laws, we could only warn them for about a year and then start to write the tickets after that, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Yeah, thank you. Further questions or comments? None, entertain a motion.
Ordinance number?
G twelve eighty-five.
Mister Mayor, I move that ordinance number twelve, G twelve eighty-five and ordinance amending section ten point oh four, point oh one oh of the El Dorado municipal code pertaining to traffic and referencing the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas City's edition twenty eighteen be passed and approved.
I'll second it.
Case removed and seconded. Any further comment? Roll call.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Motion twos for the Uniform Public Offense Code.
Twelve eighty-six.
Uh huh.
Mister Mayor, I move that ordinance number G twelve eighty-six and ordinance amending section nine point oh four, point oh one oh of the El Dorado municipal code pertaining to traffic and referencing the Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas City's edition twenty eighteen be passed and approved.
Second it.
Case removed and seconded. Any further comment or question? Roll call.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes. Thank you. Next on our agenda would be utility billing ordinance.
Mister Mayor, commission, the city of El Dorado distributes about fifty-two hundred utility bills monthly. The current utility bill is done on a small postcard. And we are very limited as to what information we can include on that postcard. Our utility billing staff and the assistant finance director, Katie Henderson, went out to bid for an eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper for our bills. Those came back with the, you'll see the bids there listed on your agenda. The bids actually came in at an amount that the city manager can approve. It'll be about thirteen hundred dollars per fund that pays for the utility bills, and there's three funds that pay for them. So the city manager donor can approve those on his own. However, in order to get to that cost, we would like to change one of our current practices. And so right now, if your bill is late the day after it's due, we send you a pink postcard that says, hey, you forgot to pay your bill. There's been a five percent penalty added on to it. If you don't pay by this date, there'll be a fifty dollar disconnect fee, and if you don't pay by this date, your service will be discontinued. So that is all on that pink postcard. So, that is all on that pink postcard. If we don't send those anymore, it allows us to get down to that $1,300 per fund amount. What we are requesting is that you make a change to the municipal code where it says currently that we will send that late notice out. And what we are asking to do now is that we will do a phone call, because our billing system allows for an automatic phone call, and it will give them the information that we need to give them. And they can, and it will let them know, hey, you need to call in and make your payment or go online and make your payment. That, the new, sorry, the pink notice often gets lost in the mail anyway. We hear that a lot, so. And we send, I want to say, 700 per billing, I think, of those notices out right now. So it's about 1,400 a month. That auto call goes out. It takes about 30 seconds. We push a button and it goes, and there's no issue. We've been using it for our disconnect notices. Actually, we've been, before they do the disconnects each month, they've been sending out that phone call and it's worked. It's kind of reduced that, the amount of people that are on that disconnect list. So, we think it will actually help us there, too. The new bill design would also allow us to do inserts. So we would be able to do inserts like, for example, the sales tax ballot that's coming up. We could put information in the bills regarding that. Brad sends a notice every year that has information on getting licenses for your animals, holidays for trash, and that kind of thing. He would be able to put that in, and the cost is so minimal that it really wouldn't change the mailing cost at all. So, any questions?
When would this take effect?
Um, we would have to work with the company. I would imagine we would shoot for 60 to 90 days.
So yet this year?
Yeah. That would be the hope, to get it done sooner rather than later.
So basically, we're passing an ordinance to do the disconnect notice differently?
Yeah, to do them as a phone call instead of a postcard.
So, talk to me about the phone call. The automated phone call happens. The school district uses it. It's a pretty common thing. Educate me, though, on someone who does not have an answering machine. Does it keep calling until it gets somebody? What's, how's that work?
It calls the number that we have on file. So if we don't have a number for you, you won't get called. But if we have your current number, you'll call that number.
So it calls a number on file. If there's not a number on file, then you don't get called to let you know that your bill is late.
Right. But, over the last year, I would say maybe two years, Katie and her staff have really been working on, every time somebody comes in, they've put notices on all the accounts that pop up when you bring up somebody's account and they come in to pay a bill, or just when they call or something. And those notices have said, hey, we need an updated phone number. We need an updated something. And so, they've been doing that over the last two years. So, really, I would say, we're probably at less than 10% of people who don't have phone numbers active in our system.
Sure. But, not unlike the mail that doesn't get delivered, I didn't get the phone call. What's the protocol for that? What are we doing about that? I mean.
Has she discussed that with either of you? Because actually, she did not discuss that with me.
Shut off.
I'm pinching.
Shut off. I mean, not paying her bill or not paying the bill. I mean, I get that. There comes a point where you're.
I think what her, what her hope was to be more like Westar, Kansas Gas, you know, if you don't pay that bill, I don't think they give you a phone call. They don't do anything. They just, eventually, if you haven't paid it within so many days, you do get shut off. And so, our phone call is kind of a, is a, our notice has always been a little bit of a courtesy. Now, if we were to do anything, like turn this over to Bad Det or something like that, we would send several notices before we did that, because we're required to by law. But, as for the phone call, I mean, they will continue to work to get as many phone numbers as possible in there, so that when it does call, they get somebody. But, most people that have started receiving those phone calls, they kind of know, they see that number pop up and they know what it's for now, so they, they call back pretty quickly. For about the 30 minutes after that phone call goes out, right now, the phone rings nonstop for a while, so.
Okay.
So, one of these three companies, what we do in our billing, is that kind of what we're?
No, we will still do the billing process. The only thing they will do is, when we're done with the billing process, so we'll still have complete control of that, we, a file will be created, and it will shoot to them, and they will just print.
Oh, there are printers, okay.
They're just a printer.
At what point do we take this phone call to a text message? Or an email?
Um, I would have to see if those options are available right now. I don't know if they are.
I think they are, Captain, but I'm just not sure how far down the road they are.
Okay. I mean, I'm just, you know, we're, I'm sure everybody in this room has a cellphone on them, so, I mean, I'm just, I'm thinking that's, at some point, that's got to be a venue that we need to entertain, as in sending notices out. Because my kids don't answer my phone calls, but they answer my texts.
I think once this new process is approved, then that opens the door to a lot of.
To other things.
Opportunities.
Okay. Any further question or comment? I entertain a motion. Number?
G1282.
I move to approve ordinance number G1282, an ordinance amending Section 13.08.060 of the Municipal Code of the City of El Dorado, as it pertains to water bills and delinquent.
Commissioner Badway, I apologize, I'm going to interrupt you. I need to amend.
I was almost done.
I know. I need to amend this. I apologize. I wrote that and was not paying attention to my ordinance, and my ordinance refers to several sections of the code, so I need to change it. It just needs to say, an ordinance amending the Municipal Code of the City of El Dorado as it pertains to utility bills and delinquent accounts notice.
Here, you take a section. That's twice she's done it to me.
Sorry.
That's conspiracy.
I scratched out the bad part.
Okay. I move to approve ordinance number G1282, an ordinance amending section of the Municipal Code of the City of El Dorado, as it pertains to water bills and delinquent accounts notice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second.
Case removed and double seconded. Any further comment? Roll call.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Nah.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
He's just mad about the spelling.
I shouldn't correct any of your guys' motions. All right. Let's move on to U.S. Department of Energy Agreement. What we got here?
Brad is 60%.
Wake up, Brad.
Mayor Commissioners, back in January of '17, the Department of Energy set out submittals for a little over $6 million in Department of Energy grant monies. We have begged and grobbled for Department of Energy money for our CNG program for many years, always to be told, you're not a part of the Kansas, you're not a part of the Kansas City Metro Energy Center, folks. So we did everything over the course of the last few years to try to be a good partner, not, not, not make others in the greater Kansas City metro area look bad by what we're doing in 13,000 population El Dorado. We received an award through the Metropolitan Energy Center in 2016, late 2016. It was a visionary award. So, we were invited to submit a list of projects that we would like to accomplish and take some of their money. And so, we were awarded that pending y'all's approval. Their monies, what it is, is it's not like at the airport, it's a 90-10 grant. They propose to give you a portion of whatever it is of the project that you're doing. So, the bigger ones that we're doing, that we're going to submit for are our garbage trucks that we have just replaced, the two of them, the rearload, commercial packer truck, and then the roll-off truck. So, there's not a 90-10, as I said. What they will pay is the difference between what it would have cost us to purchase a diesel truck and what it actually cost us to purchase a natural gas truck, which is about $40,000 a truck. So, when somebody says, what's the match? Well, there's really not. We were going to buy those two trucks anyway. And so, the money that we would receive back from them. We purchased some vehicles that would, some pickup trucks, that would also be included in that as well, and those are about $10,000 apiece. Sanitation Department by far uses more CNG than anybody else does, any of our other fleet vehicles do. So, there's lots of good things to come from this. They want to see us. There's not a distribution point between here and Wichita. Wichita's station is at 29th and Ohio, and it's very cumbersome for folks to get into. One of the things they asked us to do was to plan to enlarge our facility as far as storage capacity goes, as far as compressor capacity goes. And so, we've put together some things for them, which they seem to be very receptive to, right off of the, right off the Turnpike, 454, 254. We told them that at any point in time, if we can get somebody to come into El Dorado and start selling natural gas, compressed natural gas, we will stop selling compressed natural gas from our facility if someone should want to come to the business park or whatever. So they're actively looking for the Sparks of the World or the other, the other folks to be able to come put a station in, because they see the need on the Turnpike, so trucks can get off the Pike and right back on the Pike. Off 254, right back on 254. So, there's lots of good things that can come of this. As far as your commitment, our commitment as a city, there's not a lot, because anything that we've said that we'd like to do, if for any reason we can't financially do it as a city, or it doesn't, it doesn't come to fruition, we're not locked into having to do it. It just, it goes away in somebody else's project that overspent. They take that money and go. So it's kind of, it's kind of win-win for us. We can say, here's our wish list. There's some dump trucks in ours that, again, would, if come 19, come 20, 21, we have the ability to replace some dump trucks in the Public Works Department. Those upfits for natural gas would absolutely be covered under this grant, so. The nice part about it would be the money, the savings that we would, that we would get back from refuse collection vehicles or pickups or whatever, would go to meet or potentially come close to meeting the station upgrades for us as well. Right now, we slow fill our refuse collection vehicles. We are set up to slow fill on seven posts. Currently, we're using two. We have the ability to increase that by five more, should we need to. With the acquisition of the natural gas roll-off truck, we will need to add another post to it, which we already have and are ready to go when that vehicle gets here, so. I'll answer any questions I can. It's kind of a win-win deal for everybody. It helps them. It helps them at the federal level, as well as it gives us an option to get some money from them that we've, for so long, asked for.
So, basically, this company administers federal funds?
Yes.
That's what they do?
The Metropolitan Energy Center, yes, sir.
It's not their money?
It is not their money.
They just are the?
Department of Energy's money.
But they administer those grants?
The funds, yes, sir.
Okay. Any further questions? Seems like kind of a no-brainer thing to get in line for, right? All right, I entertain a motion. Thanks, Brad.
Mr. Mayor, I move to direct the city manager to sign the grant agreement.
Second. Case removed and seconded. Any further comment or question? Favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next on our agenda would be reports.
I have no advisory boards to report on, but I will say get out and vote tomorrow.
Prairie Trails had a meeting. Had good staff reports. I conveyed to Jason that I had a citizen golfer, I believe a member, go out of his way to tell me, walk clear across the car wash lot, to tell me what a great experience they'd been having out of Prairie Trails, how courteous staff was, how helpful staff was. And I thanked him and passed that on to Jason and Telly's staff. They've got some things coming up to, they're working on to improve the golf course. And then, I was approached by a citizen and property owner here in town who owns some property on West Olive, right there by the intersection of Arthur and Olive. And says there is a very considerable amount of foot traffic that goes west on Olive, past Arthur, and more times than not are carrying suitcases and/or large duffel bags and are, there's a, I wouldn't call it a hole in the fence, it's where the fence is missing, and Olive dead ends into the Legion property. And these folks seem to be headed up to the Legion property and not, not up to the canteen or anything, but maybe out, and don't think they're going to play disc golf. But, don't know if it's a part of our homeless population, but they've noticed a substantial number of people going through there. Didn't know if, I mean, if that's open for a reason, or if, not that if we closed that fence up, if that would actually stop anybody or anything, but.
Scott Peachton, our billing official, was in my office last week, talking about it, because there is a home in that area that faces my street, actually, and he was answering a question of mine. And he talked about that situation and believed that there had been some people in the area. And so, he asked our Parks and Rec Director to go ahead and trim back some of those trees and bushes and things in that area, and so, has kind of done a little cleanup down there to see if we.
Okay. Well, this was right down the middle of the street. I mean, it's, they're not, I mean.
Kind of cleaned up.
Yeah, they're not trying to get back in the timber or anything. They're, you know, just right down the middle of the street. And so, I don't know. I mean, no reports of mischief, vandalism, theft, anything like that, just a lot of barking dogs at night.
At one point, there was a fence there. I'm pretty com-
At, at, at one point, there was a fence there, I'm pretty confident, and, uh, I know we've had issues in the past, we've got a lot of water drainage down that area, a lot, and, and, and have had issues with fence hanging up debris and stuff and causing issues. Um, you know, I'm trying to remember, I, I believe Olive Street is an open right-of-way on into the Legion property because of the new plat they did. Um, so there is right-of-way extending on through there, um, but, um, as far as a privacy fence or a security-type fence, it'd be pretty significant.
I wasn't advocating, yeah, I wasn't advocating anything, I was just making, I told this person I would bring it up, so I didn't lie to him, so...
Well, and I could tell, I've had discussions with folks down there as well, and not necessarily about individuals, but just some maintenance things and looking at, and, and I know Kevin and his guys are looking at doing some things down there, so.
Okay.
Have, feel free to hear something like that, have them give us all, or love the visits.
I'll do it.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
Um, I got a few things. We, we didn't really get a chance to talk last week, um, since we lost forum. Um, the consent agenda, it keeps coming back to me, um, with the, like, today we approved a, um, an alcohol permit for the western frontier, and I know someone put an application in and had personal information. I would personally like to see something, whether it could just, just name, address, just something for us that, that gives me some information, that I know what this is about rather than just a line on, a line on the agenda.
I can give you the information on the one today.
Right, no, 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 I didn't get...
It's me.
No, no, and I, I keep, but I'm, but I would, even if it's just a separate, you know, ten things on there, whatever, just lines of just some, I just don't like not having something to back up what's going on.
We can, we could put in the actual certificate, I mean, it's not signed yet.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just, I would like that to be looked at, um, I just feel like there's, we get everything else and we get, and it's, it's, it's just something that just kind of keeps coming back in my head that I don't know, I don't know what I'm approving in general. I just know that someone's getting a liquor license and I just don't have the information behind it.
And, and we always try to put the na, the name of whoever's applying, the address and the date of the event, so if, if it's an, if it's a special, which that one, the one that's on there today is a special.
Right.
And if it's a yearly, then you, you'll see it and it'll say, um, for the year instead of, i- instead of having a date on it. So the one that was tonight, you see it, it was for Frontier Western Celebration, um, I'm the chair of that committee, so I actually put that one in.
And, and it's under your name?
It, it is under my name.
Okay.
And so...
I just, I would just like to have something, some, some sort of backup with some information.
Does that fill out an application?
We fill out an application that's...
We can fill out the application.
We can't. It has private information on it. I, I would not like to release my social security number.
I wouldn't want you to do that either.
We can adapt the information, but it doesn't need to be shared, we can provide the application as part of the...
Okay. Um, the, two weeks ago, there was a large, um, conversation happening on social media about homeless in this town. Um, it's, it, it turned to a point where the police department, um, chief and his staff got, put a very elegant post out with a lot of information of what they've been doing. Um, there, I think there was a lot of information that went out that was false, that the citizens, um, just assume or interpret the actions, and I think chief clarified that very well. Um, what I think, I, what I would like to know, or I'd like to have somebody kind of look at is what kind of services are provided in this town for that, that scope of person? Um, there was some, there was some information put out that, uh, BHI was buying people tents and paying their, paying their fees out of the lake. Um, with that, I saw that, I called them up and I said, I, I've just got some questions. And of course, they were like, nope, we're not, we, we don't buy tents. I didn't think so, but I, I wanted to go to the, to the source and ask the question rather than just make the assumption. Um, that I was sent to, is it Midcap or Mid?
Midcap.
Midcap, um, that they, that, um, that they s- supply some services, um, but it wasn't, like, it wasn't very specific. Um, I've heard, I've heard this line, I've heard it from many people, um, if you build it, they will come. Um, and I don't think that BHI was getting a good rap in those, in those thoughts from the citizens, because from what I, what I got from them, I don't feel like they, um, they do what they were, I wouldn't say accused, but accused of. Um, and I'm wondering, BHI, are they operating under a special use permit for that cold-weather shelter? Or is it, are they operating under something that's already in place? Cause I don't remember, before I got on this commission, voting to allow that, that, that cold-weather shelter to happen.
Is that because a church offers air facilities?
That's what I'm asking.
For the cold-weather shelter?
So, um, what was the exercise we went through before, we formed the ad hoc, there was an ad hoc group put together of various individuals around the community and, and talk about, um, the zoning as it existed at that time and how there could be an allowance for what we came up with as a definition of a transitional, um, shelter, transitional home, transitional shelter. So they helped us compile a list of all of these things that defined what that is. So they are operating under the definition of a transitional shelter.
Okay. So, and I'm, and it just, I'm, I know I'm rehashing old history, but I'm just trying to, we started out with the, the hotel out across, down, um, down two fifty-four, and the commission said, no, special use since some area of influence. And then came to us, came to this commission for a house also next to a church, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So then, now we've, now they're operating, so they're operating under a, a transitional shelter and not having to have the commission's approval?
With, with the current zoning that exists there today.
They're, they're, okay. Um, I, is the city taking, does the city inspect that? Does the city, like, do, do you go in and go, this is okay and this is not okay?
I personally don't. Fire, fire department does.
Okay.
Um, Chief Zeeman probably has officers there quite often.
Go through and, and check to make sure that it's, it's, it's in?
They, they walk through where, uh, at night.
I was gonna say, isn't that the one, you're talking about the one at the Nazarene Church?
I think that's where they are.
Because I was contacted by a member of them, and I apologize for not bringing it up, cause, um, and I was assured that, number one, it is a cold-weather shelter. I was assured they do not buy tents, they do not pay park fees, and they do not, you know, in cold weather, they have been known to give, if they're full up, they have been known to give vouchers for hotel rooms, but only in cold weather, and there are guidelines or, I think just like the gas company and electric company use, when the, it's forecasted to be below a certain, that qualifies as a cold-weather event. Um, and to clarify, on the second special use permit that came before the commission, the director of the homeless initiative withdrew...
That's right, that's what it was.
Withdrew her, um...
Petition.
Well, her request before it came to a vote.
Right. That, I remember that, yes.
So, you know, I'm just, in all fairness...
Yeah, yes, yes, of course.
As they operate today, it's, it's not a continuing twelve-month-a-year operation, it's from time to time, when temperatures and volunteers allow them to be operational. And, and they've been, um, really good with us to call and have our building official go annually and, and look at things along with the fire marshal and whoever else needs to be looked at. Been very open.
And, and that's, and when I called, they were very open too. Um, and the re, main reason why I made that call was because I was getting, not inundated, but I, I, I got, I got people asking me, um, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna address this, this existing si- situation that we have in town? And I told them that I really don't know. Um, I guess what I'm bringing to, bringing here is the fact that, um, I'm assuming all of us have had conversation over the last few weeks about this topic, and I would kind of like to, I would kind of like to have it kind of come closer to the top of the list of things for us to talk about and look at, um, and try to see, if nothing else, if, if you can just give me some facts, so at least I can understand it, so I can explain it to the people that I deal with, um, and that are asking me these questions of what are we gonna do, how can we do it? Um, I just kind of like to see that come a little bit closer to the top of the list of stuff that we're gonna do.
And of course, these people who are called in concerning this situation are more than willing to volunteer.
Yes, they're involved, some of them are volunteers, actually. I mean, actually, they, they, a large conversation I had, probably about forty percent of these people had volunteered there, so, um...
And are willing to help work on...
They, they have, they have worked on it.
Help, help work on solutions, I think, to, to, to your, to your note, yeah, I certainly saw that social media post, and also, uh, you're right, it's been, it's been a conversation. I guess I, I would echo that it just seems, you know, to, to your point, there seems to be, I don't know, whether it's perception, or we're just noticing it, or whether there simply is an increase in that population. Uh, and if that's the case, why is that? Is, is there, is there a root source to it? Are they natives, uh, of El Dorado that are finding hard times and, and what kind of services or what kind of things are available for them? Are they not from here and they're, and they're finding refuge in our community? If that's the case, why? Um, it'd be, it'd be good to know some of those, some of those facts or some of those scenarios so that we can then address solutions to them.
And, and I think that was a, the, the large conversation I was with, um, about a week, a week and a half ago, that was the biggest thing. If they're citizens, if they're El Dorado, and that's, and that's, that they're falling on hard times, then that conversation lends to, okay, what is going on, how can we fix this? But if we're getting influx from other communities because of mis, you know, miscommunication and saying that we have what, what we don't have, I would like to know that also and try to, we're never gonna fix the problem, but, you know, if we can address it somehow and try to make it, um...
Well, and the fact that we're still listed as a sanctuary county...
Right.
Even though we are not...
Right.
A sanctuary county, doesn't help information.
So, I, I guess that's what my request was, what I was coming with it.
As far as my perspective goes, I'm more than happy to make it a priority. The challenge is, is you all give my weekly report, you see that there are a number of priorities. So in order for it to escalate up that list, some things might have to come down that list, and that's just a simple matter of the economics of time, which I'm more than happy to talk about now or at some other point, but the amount of staff time we have available to explore new issues like this are, is given in between. So I'm more than happy to do that, but I just need to know where you want to reallocate those priorities, so that we can put something aside and, and put something up.
Could you, in your next city manager report, list the priorities? I know you always do.
Do.
And then we can decide, okay, where do you want to insert this?
Where can we discuss? Yeah, then we can discuss it next week.
Yeah, because I mean, the truth of the matter is, it will take time to get this and this information together, if I'm gonna change the scope of what you want to want. So it's not gonna be something that's gonna be, you know, a week, ten days, two weeks, a month, so I just need to know from your all's expectation, what do you want, when do you want it, and what all comes off that list, because that's, that's the reality of the situation.
I don't wanna see this as only a city thing.
Absolutely not, and it shouldn't be, uh, only as anything. Um, I think that we have the ability to maybe facilitate some discussion, but...
Well, they don't call it El Dorado Homeless Initiative, they call it Butler Homeless Initiative, so...
This much is true, yes.
But I mean, we need to get community, the churches, I mean, it's not just good old city commission that can deal with this.
Right. So I mean, to, to address that, I think the city's biggest probably opportunity at this is to facilitate or convene meetings, discuss the issue, but, you know, what comes out of meeting, I don't know, but, um, cuts...
Did we say BHI had a new director?
Yes, she was here today, actually. They, they, those two ladies there, those were the director and I believe chairman of the board.
Yeah.
Both named Terry, by the way.
Well, then maybe Terry one and Terry two.
We should go with shirts.
Well, you know...
The, the last time when we were working on the zoning issue, we had a group ad hoc, an ad hoc group forum. In the first meeting, it started off with everyone talking about their perspective of the issues meeting. And that kind of steered the conversation and kind of gave us a direction of where the commi- community felt like we needed to go, and that, at that time is, let's come up with a definition to allow transitional housing. So if, if something similar like that could happen, we're, we're getting everyone's perspective from the sheriff's office to the police, to the schools, to the hospital, and all of these other organizations, BHI...
All those organizations were, I was on that.
Yeah.
All those organizations were represented, that was a big committee, it was like thirty. You know, I mean, we didn't ever have thirty show up, but there were thirty members, we had several meetings.
So, so the result of that effort was then defining transitional housing and moving forward with that kind of initiative?
I have to talk about the issues, what we're seeing as a community, a lot more of a forum-type situation.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we did come up, I mean, the commission came up with, uh, an allowable, that, that use was allowable in certain zones with the special use permit.
With certain conditions, like...
Correct, yeah, there, and there were quite a few of them.
Yep.
So, yeah, that's a great example of the city's ability to be, to facilitate those conversations.
I had a gentleman come up to me the other day over here at Sunny Stalk, and he was excited. He was a homeless man here in town, but he had a home to go to. He said, I wasn't homeless because I wanted to be, I was homeless because I was a head of, I was disabled. And he couldn't get his benefits, but he had a social worker come and talk to him and tell him what he could do, and he's able to get a home, even though he didn't have no benefits right now, and it was just, that's what's out there. We need to get the social workers out there to walk through and see what we can do to help these people, and then there's some out there that are just, you know, on drugs and stuff like that, but there's people out there that are homeless because they're disabled, and they're living on the streets, so we need to get out there and find out what we have here, and see what we can do to help them. And that's something the BHI needs to step up and do.
I object to something, just a couple things.
Please do.
Uh, some of that data you're asking for, we have, just from some of the people we've contacted, and I can tell you, it's, it's a vast amount of things. Yes, we have some of our own citizens that have fallen on bad times for whatever reason, some of us addiction, some of us mental illness, uh, but we are seeing an influx of people coming from Wichita, and we're being told that, they're being told there's resources in El Dorado. We've had a number of homeless people tell us that, I'm from Wichita, I'm being told that there's resources over here. I don't know where they're getting that information, but, I mean, there's some resources in this town, but not, not what they're looking for. Uh, so, I, and I think, I think the message the police department was trying to get out is, is we can't fix this by ourselves, and you all can't fix it by yourself, it's gonna take the whole community. Uh, we have mental health issues, people are falling through the cracks, addiction, people are falling through the cracks, it's sad, but it's happening everywhere. That's the message we're trying to get is, wha- what I'd like to stop, and I don't know how, is how they're getting this wrong information that there's all these resources here, cause they get here and they find out there's really not much, so, uh, and, and everybody, everybody, the churches are just being tap-dry, it's just, there, there's not that many resources out there.
And and everybody, everybody, the churches are just being tapped dry, it's just, there there's not that many resources out there. So I think what we're wanting is a, is a bigger discussion, but we can't fix them alone. But to Scott's point about the Nazarene Church, I was there when, I don't remember if you were there or not, but. Peason was there, I was there, the Fire Marshal was there, the Fire Chief was there, the Sheriff was there. And we all met and looked and uh there were, there were several things they had to do to open that, but we gave them the suggestions and they did that. Some of them had to do with smoke alarms and that kind of stuff, so uh made it to where they could get that open in the winter time, but that's all I had, thank you.
Thanks, Chief, thanks.
I don't have any things. Uh Inc. Housing, uh they had three houses that were open here in town last week. Uh had a good turnout, the one was on Santa Fe and and one, and the rental houses were on Walnut and over in the Breiler Edition and. There's been quite a bit of interest in our rental properties here in town, and which is, which is good, and we're gonna need to get more here. And there was quite a few people that checked out the house on Santa Fe, and it was nice seeing all the people there. Uh also, I wanted to ask, uh cause I was asked about this, has Main Street talked to staff about, I know we, they came in here and talked about the. The trash cans and stuff, but the only thing that we're gonna do for Main Street is our city parking lots, are we? We're not gonna do the entire downtown area and give them trash. Receptacles, you know, build, build trash receptacles to hide the trash can, we're just gonna do it on our city property, right? Did our city parking lots?
Well, we don't yet know. I mean, I think they submitted a petition that was. Asking the city to look at ways to improve the downtown aesthetics to include parking lots and alley trash receptacles, I don't know the exact words, but. We staff have had a meeting internally to kind of start talking about some options, we have not yet met with Main Street, but we don't know. What we wanted to do was kind of get, I wanted to get staff kind of talking about some options, and then would we talk to Main Street about what their expectations are. So we don't yet know what, you know, if they're asking us just for the city's, the city owned uh facilities, or they're asking for all of it. Um but my guess would be that they're asking for all of it, but.
But then you got, then you got the businesses that are not on Main Street, that are getting nothing, and they're gonna start asking you for, to build. Those trash facilities for them, and that was one thing that was brought up to me, is if you're gonna do that for them, why not build for us out here on the West Side? And, you know, I I know we wanna beautify downtown. Well, we can only take care of our own city property, we can't take care of everybody downtown. Cause then you're gonna have the West Side complaining that they need to have it done out there.
No, it makes sense, um so we're still looking at what that looks like. Brad, do we own those those corrals, or those C N corrals?
Uh the ones in the, in the mini parking lots, that's correct.
So yeah, in the municipal parking lots, those corrals are owned by the city and presently. Uh staff is only looking at those corrals, now with that said, if the request is made to extend the scope of that to corrals that the city does not own. And that will be another conversation we're gonna have to have with the commission to determine if we want to do that, and if so, how are we gonna pay for it?
Yeah, would that be assessed to their property?
That's what would be an option.
Those are options, yes, so there are a number of options. For downtown, options include everything from the city at large paying for it, to doing a CID where there's a special sales tax. And or a special assessment to probably ever paying for it a hundred percent, um so there's a plethora of options. We haven't gotten that far because we don't know what we're paying for.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
The only I have, I think, is Main Street had a meeting last week, and they're getting ready for the uh Western Festival and their steak feed. And they also were the recipient of a five thousand dollar uh donation from Phillips, which was kind of a big day for them. Worked, they've been working hard to uh to build those relationships with with those kind of organizations, and they hosted a pipeline. Interestingly enough, they hosted a uh a uh forum for the pipeline companies to come in and talk about their, what they do. And I think this was a, yeah, maybe a spin off from that effort, so. That was a Main Street report. For that. Everything else, seriously, thanks for the conversation about uh the homeless, I think that's certainly one that we. And 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 David, I called up and looked at the twelve things that are on your priority list, um yeah, to keep. To keep adding to that, it's not fair either, but there are a handful of things there that maybe. I maybe have a shorter views to them or not, I don't know, but I don't I don't have a solution other than, yeah, it'd be nice, I guess it's time to maybe reconvene and. Reassess that such, that whole deal, and if it's the same kind of group that was met, gosh, it's probably been four years ago now, or more.
And if, I mean, and if it's something we can, if it's just getting the information out to the citizens, just knowing what what is. Just kind of what the assessment of the situation is, that might even help too, just um you know. Getting the electorate, knowledge never hurts, rather than just making assumptions, because we're all gonna make the. The way that we wanna make our assumptions, not what actually is happening sometimes.
And there were assumptions made.
And and I agree, and that's kind of um, that that that's the hard, that was the hardest part to read was, is that I knew. Eighty percent of those were not accurate. And I wanted to get in there and go, that's not right, this is what it is, but I also wanted to get information ahead of time, which is why I called BHI first. Are you buying tents? Is that you?
I got one thing, um the the specific housing meeting, uh conference is October sixth through the eighth, I need to know if anyone is planning or wanting to go.
I will plan to go, I sure wish it wasn't a weekend, but.
It's always easy.
Is what it is.
You don't actually have to go until the seventh, you can go the seventh and the eighth, so it's a little less of your weekend. The sixth is the, is the um training that costs extra to go to, so.
Okay, well, yeah, I plan, put me down as a, as an attendee, and let me know what the training stuff is before I decline to go this sixth. Thank you, I would recommend it, I mean, and Nick, you've been several of them, I think, it is, it is pretty interesting, but. It's a Sunday, Monday.
Say the sixth, seventh and eighth.
Or seventh and eighth, that's the.
Or seventh and eighth.
Monday. I won't be attending this year's. Cindy's mom sold her house, so I don't have a place to stay. Okay, if anybody else has interest, you might respond to David or Tabitha.
Sooner rather than later, I need to make hotel reservations before they run out.
Right now, I'm very convinced it's the one, so unless you let me know soon, then we'll proceed.
Okay. With no, having no executive session, uh next, I have a motion for adjournment.
I move with adjourned.
Second.
Favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.